We're ready. Well, welcome to the February 1st, 2018 business meeting, and we'll start off with the role. Don, go up.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. We have with us today Mr. Stephen Madcor, representing County Council, and Kevin Moss, serving as your clerk of the board this morning. I'll start with the role. Commissioner Humberson?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Chair Bernard?
Here.
And I understand that Commissioner Savis is not here today because of a family medical problem. He was not able to attend last week's meeting because of the same family medical problem.
All right. Thank you. And we don't have any presentations, so we're going to start right out with citizen communication. We have Brian.
The Fledge of Allegiance.
Oh, excuse me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, citizen communication. Brian Johnson and Steve? I can't quite remember how to pronounce his last name.
Chienel.
Chienel.
So it's been a little while. So I had a meeting with Ken yesterday, and it kind of surprised me when I brought up the whistleblowers that he didn't know what I was talking about. So, because they went into Nava, or is that his name? Brian Nava? So Nava says he will give me that information if I have those whistleblowers. Now, this isn't one whistleblower, like you had with Wes. Remember the Wes one, Jim?
Mm-hmm.
And how I told you to fire him?
Mm-hmm.
Multiple times?
Yeah, so we don't fire people.
And how much did it cost us? Who's still here and who's gone?
Yeah.
And how much did it cost us? Million?
Mm-hmm. That's my understanding.
So Nava says he will release that information if I get the whistleblowers to sign a release to release that information to me. I want to make sure we don't have a problem, because I'm not going to go to the effort.
Mm-hmm.
No problem? Council has no problem?
It predates us. My only question is, whatever the legal requirements are, which I would defer to County Council on that, I would expect--
I'm asking him the question.
Is that something you could answer?
I'm unclear with what the inquiry actually is.
I want the informations that the whistleblowers brought forward.
In what matter?
Well, which department?
What matter are we talking about?
Well, I don't know what the actual matter is till I have the whistleblower's statements.
Don?
There's a certain sense of confidentiality that happens when you're reporting matters of public concern to an internal investigation. Sometimes these people ask for confidentiality, and that is to be respected and protected by the governmental entity to which they report.
But if they waive their right to me, that's what I'm saying. I go get a notary statement from the whistleblowers to release that information to me. They've waived their right.
I'm not entirely sure what types of rights you're talking about, per se.
Well, they've waived their right to be--
Anonymous, I guess.
Anonymous.
If you know who they are, they can report directly to you, I suppose. I'm not entirely sure how we--
Well, I want to see what Nava has, because you claim you had this done. I want to check to see if they bring up X and you do nothing about X to show that you didn't do it.
I recommend that you and I have a chat afterwards. I'd be happy to speak with you, Mr. Johnson, to see exactly what your specific issues are and work through them with you.
And Don?
And I believe that Mr. Johnson may be talking about ethics points, inquiries that have been forwarded over to the Internal Auditor's Office, and matters that Mr. Nava, our internal auditor under the County Treasurer's Office, reviews and investigates. I believe that that's what Mr. Johnson may be speaking about. So I think Mr. Madcor's suggestion about meeting with Mr. Johnson directly, I think, is a good suggestion, so.
Yes.
So you're going to call me?
I'll be here right afterwards.
Well, but how long is this going to be? Because I got to go--
This should be a short one, I think.
All right. Thank you.
Go ahead.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. As you know, my name is Steve Chienello, and I reside in Beaver Creek. The reason I'm here today is to give public testimony on my continued frustration and the community's continued frustration in regards to marijuana enforcement. First, I would like to thank Commissioner Humberson for addressing these issues with the Sheriff's Office. I do believe we still have a lot of work to do on that. So let me start by giving you some examples. If a citizen calls the Sheriff's Office with concerns of an illegal grow, at this time, all the Sheriff's Office does is call Oregon Health Authority, or OLCC, to find out if there's a license. If they have a license, the Sheriff's Office does nothing at that point. Here lies the problem. If a medical-- for example, if a medical grower does not have a land use approval, how can they have a license to be legal? That would be considered an illegal grow if this grow started after March 1st of 2016, when county regulation-- the county regulation date. Solution: the Sheriff's Office needs to take this one step further. Check Oregon Health Authority to see if they have a license. Check with Clackamas County Code Enforcement to assure that they have a land use application that has been approved and required permits electrical, plumbing, mechanical, etc. Or if they are a non-conforming use grow. If they do not have a land use application or permits, the Sheriff's Office should do an onsite visit. An administrative warrant to verify grow quantities and make arrests. They should also file this violation with Code Enforcement as an official complaint. Code Enforcement should notify the Oregon Health Authority to have the grow cards revoked. With recreational marijuana grows, the Sheriff's Office should also call OLCC to see if they have a license. If they do, you can be assured that they have a land use application, because this is the requirement of OLCC. The Sheriff's Office should call Code Enforcement as a follow-up to ensure there are no code violations on the property. If they are, then Code Enforcement should communicate to OLCC to red-flag that address as it is an OLCC violation. Their license can be suspended. Now, to Code Enforcement. If a citizen contacts Code Enforcement to file a complaint, all they do is send a 30-day-- a letter with a 30-day notice, which in turn, all that really does is give an illegal grow the opportunity and the time to move the illegal grow off the premises. Then Code Enforcement begins to try to bring them into compliance. Why are we continuing to reward for bad behavior? Instead of bringing individuals into compliance for breaking the laws, let's reward them with arrest warrants and have some real accountability in this county again. I'm happy to answer any questions. And as a side note, there are over 30 registered known marijuana grow site complaints that have been operating without land use approvals, and that's on the Clackamas County website.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
I just-- sorry, I didn't put my card on. I just want to thank you for coming and sharing. Hearing directly from our citizens is so important and being so concise and laying it out, it really makes a difference, and it helps arm us with the information that we need to continue working on this problem. So, thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner Fisher. On a side note, too, I did email Commissioner Humberson the other day, and he did a great job on follow-up. And as another example I would like to use is, take the Mountain Hood Equestrian Center for an example. They have been out of compliance since 2014, and the citizens in Clackamas County know recently that Code Enforcement was on the property and discovered another two illegal grows inside that facility. So here lies the frustration. Why didn't the Code Enforcement officer immediately, when they were safe, maybe on the premises or off the premises, contact the Sheriff's Office, and the Sheriff's Office go in and do a sweep and arrest people? I mean, if you go back and look at the dates since 2014, this facility and the owner of that facility has been manipulating the laws of this county, yet no real accountability has happened to date. And that's another example. There are several throughout the county.
I read that they are closing down, though. They are closing that down.
They've been saying that for two years now.
We'll see, right?
Yeah. Thank you.
Jim, I've got my line on. Can I say?
Oh, Paul. Oh, you're Paul.
I'm Paul. I'm probably sitting in the wrong place. Okay. So I just wanted to make a suggestion, because what I heard was that sounded extremely complicated in terms of enforcement. Maybe we should get together with our Code Enforcement folks and the Sheriff's Office and take a closer look on what their process is, and maybe as a work session, you know, just to kind of get-- because this sounds very-- it sounds Byzantine to me. And if it's Byzantine, I don't see how people can get the, you know, safety and enforcement that they need. And I'm not sure if it's Byzantine because of the rulemaking with OLCC, or if it's our process, but it would be nice to get a closer look at that system, because it doesn't sound as if the system's working well for the constituents. Yeah. And Ken wanted--
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
If we were to do that and try to put together a working group that could work on this, we need to include the District Attorney's Office. Based on the conversations I've had with the sheriff, there may be some input there that would be valuable, let me put it that way. And I'm trying to be polite about this, so I think we have to have them at the table.
Yes, there's actually, in the very near future, a policy session set to begin discussions about how the tax revenues that we are receiving can be deployed for law enforcement and Code Enforcement purposes. It's, I think, sometime in one of your policy sessions upcoming here in February. But in addition to that, I think it would be helpful to have the District Attorney, Sheriff's Office, and our Code Enforcement staff meeting together with you to kind of go through the protocols and processes between the different offices, given their different roles in the enforcement process.
And the final analysis prosecution is a key component of this, and without the District Attorney's cooperation on it, it becomes an exercise in futility. So I think they have to be at the table.
Darlene Atkinson and Maria Slater.
Thanks. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Darlene Atkinson. I'm a resident and voter of Clackamas County. Out of 51 years that I've lived on this earth, 25 have been spent in Clackamas County. I'm here today to bring something to your attention: conduct that I find unacceptable and frankly disturbing. I'm not a public speaker. I've never sat before at a board. I've never attended a protest. I'm not an activist. I'm a citizen. What my political leanings are do not matter. Where I buy my groceries doesn't matter. What my faith is doesn't matter. The only thing that should matter to each of you is that I'm a citizen. I consider myself to be a pretty non-confrontational person who's found herself in the middle of a political storm. I find myself there because of the words of Jim Bernard, words he wrote under his official title, "Clackamas County Chair." The position is required to act in a nonpartisan fashion. The chair and all of the commissioners are required to leave partisanship at the door to fully serve all of Clackamas County residents. He's failed to do this and, in fact, has used his political positional authority to further politics, publicly denigrating others and silence the voices of his constituency who are of no use to him. This is a violation of Resolution 2017-93 that he signed in August. Apparently, when he signed the document agreeing to leave partisanship at the door, he effectively tossed it out the window. However, this behavior isn't anything new. In fact, as you will see in the packet of exhibits that I've given each of you, it has been going on completely unchecked and unchallenged for quite some time, and has now escalated to an attack on an individual who is a resident of this county, as well as a state representative. But wait, there's more. Jim Bernard spent last weekend and this week censoring his chair, Jim Bernard, Facebook account, systematically removing nearly every critical comment and blocking those by constituents. If you were going-- if you were to go to Jim Bernard's Facebook page right now, you will find posts made by him that show X number of comments, yet when you look at the comments, there are far less visible. They've been removed, and the comments are blocked. Conveniently, the ones that do remain show sympathy and support for Chair Bernard. I have included just a few examples in those packets, as there were far more than I could print out. That is far from being nonpartisan. Mr. Bernard took an oath to uphold the Oregon State Constitution, the US Constitution, as well as agreed to Resolution 2017-93. His actions demonstrate the opposite. Federal court has ruled that a public official cannot block constituents or remove comments made by them on social media accounts that represent their position. The federal judge in Davison versus Luden County Board of Supervisors ruled it was a cardinal sin under the First Amendment. The packets before you are broken down into two sections. The first shows numerous clearly partisan posts that degrade and disregard other political parties, affiliates, constituents, and their beliefs. The second section shows examples of comments and their removal. Due to Clackamas County Chair Bernard's inability to perform in a nonpartisan manner and uphold the oaths he took, I request that he resign from the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming today.
Not a comfortable position to be in.
I want to-- one comment is, that is my Facebook page. It's not the county's Facebook page.
I'm sorry, sir, it's not. If you will look in your packet, I gave you an example of a personal account versus a public official account.
It's my personal account, which I control. The county has nothing to do with it. It's not hosted on our website.
You are representing a public official with that account.
I represent myself, not the county.
I'm sorry, you do not.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Please.
Tough act to follow there.
Yeah.
I'm Marcy Slater. I live in Welch's, Oregon. I'm representing the Hoodland Women's Club at this point. And I-- today, you'll be considering memorandum of understanding for-- from the Parks Board to the Hoodland Women's Club. We are looking forward to this, because we are looking forward to developing a park on that land. We have no-- up in Hoodland, we really have no center of community. We have no public place to meet. We have no public place to play or gather. And we are also desperately in need of a sense of identity, and we believe that developing a park district in our area will give us that, will give us an opportunity to have some self-governing in terms of the land use around us, and the land especially, that the county will like to deed to us once our park district is established. We currently have private venues for people to use, but no public, no community-owned space. The community has a sentimental attachment, of course, to the Dormant Center, which many of you are aware, and may see it-- most of us see it as our own public space. A park on that land makes perfect sense and a unifying focus for our community. A couple of years ago, when there was a movement to develop a park on that land, the majority of people surveyed were in favor of establishing a park district with a tax base to pay for such a project. And that is our goal now. We believe that the interest still exists. We have already established a park committee, contacted Special Districts Association of Oregon, and have been working closely with your own Rick Gruen on this project, as well as have had consultations with Ken Humberson. We have been raising money for a feasibility study to hire an attorney to fund a ballot measure. We have developed community-- a committee structure to build and execute a campaign that will get our park district established and funded. We are driven by the knowledge that such a project must be for the people, built by the people of our community. In the next few months, we will be attending every organization's meetings in our community to put forward our ideas and solicit individuals for help with this campaign. We know that this is a very big project for a very small community, and welcome any support and encouragement, advice, or resource that Clackamas County can offer. We thank you for the consideration of this MOU and eventually deeding us this land. Do you have any questions of me?
Ken? I just want to say thank you for coming and the work that you're doing. And if there's anything I can do to help up there on the mountain to help that get done, please let me know. I'll be more than happy to help.
We really appreciate that. We'll be calling you.
I think what you guys are trying to do up there will really help build your community more, because it's something to rally around that's positive and hopeful for the local area. So wherever I can be, let me know.
Thank you. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Cynthia Dahl and Diane Gruber.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me here. I apologize for being semi-unfamiliar with the process. I'm really just here to encourage that MOU today as well. I heard that that was on the agenda, and just want to be here to represent the drive and ambition and potential that this MOU has for our community. I have here with me the most recent copy of The Mountain Times that, on the front page, gives a great example of other properties up there that are just kind of in the air, so to speak. And I think that this initial MOU for the land being discussed for our Parks District here would just be an extraordinary foundation for just astronomical potential for our community, and not only our community, but the outreach we have for the communities around us as well. So anyways, that's-- I don't want to take up any more of your time. I feel so visual here. That was outstanding. But again, a tough act to follow, and I apologize. But yeah, thank you for hopefully eventually deeding us the land and giving us some guidance there on what we can do.
Well, we're all very supportive, so. Thank you.
Sounds like it. Thank you.
By the way, looking forward to the crab feed.
Right, yeah.
Just make sure there's some roast beef left when I get there.
I'm Diane Gruber, a 30-year resident of West Lynn. I'm a semi-retired attorney. It's the first time I've been to this meeting, and I feel very uncomfortable criticizing somebody in public, but I think it needs to be done, especially with 2017-93, the resolution passed by the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners in August. And I'll just, for the TV cameras, I will read just parts of this where it says, "Whereas the commissioners are elected in nonpartisan seats and commit themselves to respecting each other's political perspective of local, regional, and national elected official," of which Julie Parrish is. She's my longtime state representative, and she has done a great deal for her constituents and for the state of Oregon. "Whereas Clackamas County is committed to achieving outcomes that improve the health and prosperity of all who live in Clackamas County. Whereas the county acknowledges that diverse political views of all persons and believes everyone, no matter what their political affiliation, should be treated with respect, publicly and privately," I added that. "Whereas political vitriol, animus, and diatribe are great impediments to the work of the county. And whereas decisions are derived from diverse political perspectives, we hereby resolve as follows: The Clackamas County Board of Commissioners affirms the value of nonpartisanship in its deliberations and determinations, and vows to respectfully take into consideration differing political perspectives on proposed policies. The Clackamas County Board of Commissioners, elected on a nonpartisan basis, will leave partisanship at the door to fully serve all the residents of Clackamas County." I don't believe that all the residents are being served, but we'll lay that by this board, because it's four Democrats and one lone Republican. I will lay that aside and say that when Mr. Bernard, whom I've never met before, he had two-- he had four choices. He could have privately chastised Julie Parrish for Measure 101. He could have privately and politely talked to her about it. He could have provided constructive criticism on Facebook, constructive and polite, but he chose the fourth. He chose nastiness, screw you, and so forth, in public, totally unnecessary, and basically was saying, I hate this word, "screw you" to the public, to the thousands and thousands and thousands of Clackamas County residents who voted against 101. And I think he has no choice but to resign, because he's lost the-- he's told the public that half of us don't count.
Thank you. Thank you. Les Poole and Tim Leshers.
Good morning. I'm going to be brief today. I spoke last week. I'm Les Poole. I'm here almost every week. You've probably heard me talking about transportation, concerns about Damascus, land use, the economy, our situation with the uncertainty of the library. There's just so many things we need to deal with. And unfortunately, here I am today dealing with something that I personally dealt with a couple of years ago and others have, and that's the conduct of Chair Bernard. Conduct. Did you know that if you want to get to know someone, you see how they behave in a crisis? When my life was in a crisis, I had that on the dashboard of my car for months. When I look at what was written by Chair Bernard on his Facebook page, and it doesn't matter whether it was his private page or not, he's a representative of the citizens. When I look at what he wrote, I don't see exuberance. I don't buy the story that he was upset about Measure 101 and people losing health care, because that was the excuse that Martha offered last week after I spoke. Others repeated that. The citizens don't believe that. Since that time, there was a narrative that Jim's got some family issues, and I certainly know what that feels like. But if someone was in a situation where they were upset, they were hurting, they were angry-- But if someone was in a situation where they were upset, they were hurting, they were angry, or all of the above, why would that individual lash out? Well, in frustration and in pain. How is it that Mr. Bernard was in pain when his side won? How is it that Mr. Bernard was in pain to the point where he wrote this? He attacked her. This wasn't just lashing out at someone. This was a public attack. And I thought about it. There's a word for it. You ever watch a football game? Do you know what a major infraction is? Do you know what you can get thrown out of the game for? For taunting. And that's what you were doing, sir. You were taunting her. And I'm outraged by that. And there's no excuse for that. And Martha, please don't defend it any further. Don't fall on your sword for someone who has not been good for the county too many times. If this was the first time we'd run into something like this, it would be different. But it's not. And we're spending our time just outraged. And as outraged as I am, I would never write screw you to anybody, but I would ask them to issue a very clear heartfelt apology publicly. And I would also ask that person, because of the repeated behavior, to strongly think about resigning. I really would, Jim. If I was in your shoes, boy, I'd be talking about resigning. And I'd turn my Facebook page back on and see what people think. Thank you for your time.
You're speaking to me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Are you Mr. Jim Bernard? Nice to meet you.
You too.
Martha, nice to meet you. I'm Tim Lucier. Sonia, nice to meet you. Tim Lucier. Ken Hubbertson, Tim Lucier, nice to meet you. It's my first time ever appearing here. I'm a native Oregonian and a registered voter here in Clackamas County. I came here for three reasons today, to call on Jim Bernard to resign. One, due to the clear harassment according to the employee handbook. Number two, due to violating Memo 2017-93, which Mr. Bernard signed this fall. And number three, for compromising and making Clackamas County ineffective under Chair Bernard's leadership. His ineffective, his offensive actions, as have been called out by numerous women's today, have been clear. The page, Clackamas County Chair Jim Bernard, last week attacked Julie Parrish for no reason because she won, or excuse me, she lost an election of a healthcare tax that she put on the ballot so that citizens can vote. And I know, Mr. Bernard, that you don't like the citizens having power, which is why you keep smirking at people like Les Poole and these women who have called you out for your bullying. You came to power saying that you were going to beat the bully, Mr. Jim Ludlow, and you became the bully. They ran on a message of stopping Portland creep, and yet you became the creep. The message that you said to Julie Parrish, a friend of mine, a woman who fights for taxpayers, fights against ridiculous healthcare taxes that you're so proud that temporarily passed, is inappropriate, and that's why you should resign. So you violated the memo that you signed, which said, "A call for civility." You signed it. I didn't see anyone else's signatures on it. Then you violated the employee handbook. I'm a former county employee, Mr. Bernard, not when you were here. I was a county roads employee for two summers. Great opportunity. I was also a sheriff's cadet. I just met Craig Roberts, our elected sheriff, in the hallway. So if I had done the same exact thing as a temporary employee, like you are, an employee of Clackamas County, because you're paid for by these people, the taxpayers, then I would have resigned. So you have to resign for attacking an elected woman named Julie Parrish. In my last minute, and I am recording this, I will just read the statement. You wrote, and I don't know if you're drunk at eight o'clock at night or if you're just angry, you blamed everything on your healthcare issues, on your family of the crisis. It sounds like you need counseling, and it sounds like you need help for your mental instability. You wrote, "Screw you, Julie Parrish. You put Measure 101 on the ballot and you lost." The same argument that we've had enough money if we'd cut budgets. Cut you from the legislature. Collect all the coupons to feed your family and pay for your healthcare. And you smirk up there because you think it's funny that you wrote it. But enough is enough. You know, you blast Trump, oh, he needs to check himself in rehab. It's you that needs to check into rehab, Mr. Bernard. So here's the harassment policy guidelines. Sexual harassment is absolutely what you did. You actually, harassment is defined by your county handbook. You are an employee as verbal or physical conduct in a derogatory, hostile way. And you're an employee, you get a paycheck from Clackamas County, you get purse. You did that. So please resign. Do the right thing, Jim Bernard. Are you going to? Can I ask one question? Will you resign?
I am not.
Okay, so you're not going to resign?
No.
For attacking a woman. For attacking a woman saying, "Screw you."
You're done. Thank you.
So are you. Thank you.
Well, with that, we're on to the consent.
Mariana.
Oh, Mary. Mrs. Moore?
Yeah, I'm Mariana Moore from Gladstone, formerly from Milwaukee. I grew up there, so I've known the Bernards for a long, long time. And I'm ashamed of how he's been acting and his, the capacity that he has. And I just think it's time for you to move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to the consent agenda. It asks the clerk to read the consent agenda by title only.
All right. Thank you, Chair Bernard. On today's consent agenda, under Health, Housing, and Human Services, we have approval of a subrecipient agreement, Amendment Number One, with Friends of the Camby Adult Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement, Number 156293, with the State of Oregon Department of Human Services for the operation of the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance SNAP Employment and Training. Approval of an agency service contract with Oregon Child Development Coalition for preschool promised services. Approval of Amendment One of the Revenue Agreement with Oregon Health and Science University for the Cocoon Program. And approval for a revenue agreement with Care Oregon for the Integrated Behavioral Health Program Per Member Per Month Incentive Program. Under Technology Services, approval of purchase with CDW-G through the State of Oregon Cooperative Contract for VM Ware Software Enterprise License Agreement. Under Elected Officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. And from our District Attorney's Office, approval of the 2017 through 2019 Victims of Crime Act and Criminal Fine Account Non-Competitive Program Grant. Under our Department of Disaster Management, approval of fiscal year 2018 State Homeland Security Grant Program Application to the State of Oregon for four projects. And under our Business and Community Services, approval of a memorandum of understanding between Hoodland Women's Club and Business and Community Services County Parks. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Do any commissioners wish to remove or pull an item from the consent agenda? Nope. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
They moved and seconded, approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next is County Administrator Updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a couple of items to share with you this morning. First is our Water Environment Services Department is beginning to promote its fifth annual River Health Stewardship Grant Program this week. These grants provide funding and partnerships to help improve local watersheds. Wes is reaching out to area businesses to brainstorm ideas well in advance of our application deadline, which will be in late April. Last year, Wes awarded some $240,000 of these grants to some 14 organizations that benefited Rock Creek, Kellogg Creek, Mount Scott Creek, Phillips Creek, Rose Creek, Johnson Creek, and the Clackamas River. And so we're looking forward to hearing from folks this coming year and getting feedback from local businesses as to how they can best participate. The second item I wanted to share with you is, you know, earlier this week, we had a community meeting at Rex Putnam High School to talk about the Oak Lodge Library. And actually, it wasn't just about the library, it was also about our strategic partnership with the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and the school district as well. It's an open house event where we shared considerable amount of information. I wanted to let you know, we got the final count. We had 102 citizens come to attend that workshop, which, especially given the weather, that was just an outstanding turnout. I thought it was an excellent opportunity to secure public feedback about the library and about the strategic partnership and get the county staff and local community folks working together towards planning for a future library for the Oak Lodge area. So it's part of our robust community outreach effort, and I'm very pleased to be a part of it.
Okay, with that, Commissioner Schrader.
Well, there's a lot on our mind today, so just wanted to let folks know. I actually talked with Julie this morning, because I consider her a good friend of mine. And I basically said how sorry I was and that, that I get in trouble a lot of times as a Democrat, because I have Republican friends. Lori DeReeber's one, Julie's one. Doesn't mean I agree with them in any way, shape, or form everywhere politically, but I believe that friendship is important, and I think that loyalty is important. And when I come under fire sometimes from some of my Democratic friends, because I'm not following a line, I say, "But you don't understand, it's about friendship. It's about being loyal to people who you have fun with." Julie makes me laugh. I have fun with her. We have done a lot of work on military family issues. I don't agree with her on everything, that's for sure. But I guess the other values that I want to say that guide me, not as a Democrat or a Republican or the label, is compassion and forgiveness. So I guess what I would say, I want to make it clear, I do not condone, I do not condone things that are said sometimes in the heat of the moment. So I'm sorry that this happened. I spoke to Julie myself. I'm going to continue to be her good friend. I think she was, I think she was upset, but she seems to be doing okay. And so what I'm going to ask people is loyalty to friends is important. And I'm so very sorry that this unfortunate incident happened, and I'm also hopeful, I'm also hopeful that it won't happen again.
It's not your offense to apologize for Mr. Bernard.
No, I'm just-
He needs to resign.
He has attacked the women of this county by disrespect.
And you defend him again.
Another woman, we are now me too. He threw it into that bucket.
And you defend it.
Clackamas County-
No, I'm not. I'm not defending it. I'm just saying that I am a very close friend of Julie's, and I have talked to her about it, and we are still close friends.
Tell him to resign.
Okay. Sorry, Jim.
Me too, Mr. Bernard.
You're attacking women, you're attacking citizens of Clackamas County. Resign.
But there, there are, there are a few things, other things I'd like to talk about a little bit, if you wouldn't mind. And that is, yesterday, we had a really excellent meeting with the Oregon City Housing Coalition. And that's a group of folks that are working with the county to address the issues of houselessness and homelessness in this county. And it went very, very well, and we are hopeful that that grassroots movement, and I work with this one, with Commissioner Savis, who isn't here today, that that grassroots movement will really help us solve the houselessness and the homelessness that we deal with in this county. We also had the State of the County yesterday, and I am proud to say that we have a triple-A rating with our Bonding Authority, which actually reflects the solvency and the ability of this county to fiscally manage its resources very, very wisely. That was a big boon to us. We also have a new state senator, State Senator Robert Wagner, and all of us were there to actually interview, do the job interview for that particular appointment today. And I'm glad to welcome him to our legislative delegation from Salem. I also had the opportunity to join the cities in their dinner, the city of Milwaukee the other day, where it was a gathering of all of our city managers, city counselors, and mayors. And once again, we heard from our legislative delegation, Karen Power, who's working on housing issues, Jeff Riordan, who was there, and Mark Meek, all very fine members of our delegation that are going to go down to Salem this month and we hope work for the priorities of the county. And then my fellow commissioners and I, we were all together at Oak Lodge Library, I think. Remember we were there? Where we were starting to really pull together a coalition to make sure that both Gladstone and the unincorporated urban areas has library access to the things that they, that they need and want for their children there. So very proud of that. So I started something new last week, and I was going to do it again today, because, and Kevin is helping me, because I think he's an English major, I think, too. I was almost an English major. But I pick up a word of the week that's kind of different, and this week, the word is preternatural, and it means existing outside of nature, existing when it's natural or regular, extraordinary, inexplicable by ordinary means, especially psychic. And it comes from the Latin phrase praeternatium, which means beyond nature. And medieval Latin scholars rendered the term as preternaturalis, and that form inspired the modern English version. Unusual things are sometimes considered positive and sometimes negative. And throughout its history, preternatural has been used to refer to both exceptionally good things and naturally evil ones. In its earliest documented uses in the 1500s, it tended to emphasize the strange, ominous, or foreboding, but by the 1700s, people were using it more benignly to refer to fascinating supernatural or heavenly phenomena. So stay tuned, because we'll have our word of the week pretty frequently here now. And if anyone would like to contact my office with an interesting word that we can talk about, I'd be glad to do that. So, okay, thank you.
Arassment, as they-
Thank you.
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chair Bernard. First of all, I want to say, give a thank you to our weekly returning citizen, Les Poole. I so appreciate you, Les. I, every week, almost every week, you've missed a couple, though. And when you do miss, it doesn't feel like we can actually, actually proceed. But I want to say thank you for being here, for listening. I think it's so important that government is transparent and accountable, and I just really appreciate you bringing your thoughts, your concerns. Definitely makes an impact. And before this meeting today, I had written out just a little note, just to say thank you, Les. I had no idea that we were going to have this meeting, but that note was for you, and I just want to, want to honor that. And I also want to thank, I don't see that Darlene is still here, but I want to give a thank you to Darlene. I don't spend enough time on Facebook, obviously, because I did not see the post originally, but Darlene gave, got in touch with me and educated me about that. And it, it hurt. It hurt to see it, it hurt to read it, physically hurt to see that. And I was really thankful that she brought it to my attention, because I wasn't, I didn't know what was said. But I do have to say that I did call Chair Bernard, and I will not apologize or make excuses, but I just listened and I cared. I think we all care so much about this county. Everybody that's sitting in here cares about the issues that we're all fighting for. We have so much to do. We have almost 100 people moving to the region every day. Clackamas County is the area where the growth is, I consider it the final frontier, if you look at the maps of where growth is possible. It's coming here. We all have to work together in order to meet the challenges that lie ahead. I want to also bring attention, in the spirit of being nonpartisan, it's a tremendous value that, that I know that we share as a commission. I know that it's an important value for the residents of this county. And I just want to bring light to a newspaper article that was in today's paper about the audit for child welfare. Was a very concerning audit. It was, it listed many, many concerns that I think many of us that care about children and families have known about for a long time, and it's made us angry, and it's really been awful. It's been awful. But I was so thankful, I was like saying, oh, thank you. But I was so thankful, I was like saying, oh, thank you to our Secretary of State, Dennis Richardson, for really laying it out there and in a constructive way to say, look, child welfare, this is what you need to do. You need to fix the system. You need to fix the systematic problems that live within child welfare. And at the very end of that article was a quote from our Secretary of State that said, this isn't the governor's problem, this is our problem because Oregon's children are all of our children. So at the state level, seems that we're getting it right with not being partisan, not placing blame and looking at where the challenges are. And so I just want to encourage all of us to look towards the solutions. And being here, holding government accountable is part of the solution. And I honor you for making your opinions known. It makes a difference. It matters. And we need to all be working together to move Clackamas County forward. So thank you.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This week, I spent a lot of time in various and sundry individual meetings with constituents, hearing their concerns. I've also attended the Malala Area Chamber fundraiser this week, the Oak Lodge Library Gathering for the citizens there. And I do look forward to us building two libraries, one for Oak Lodge and one for Gladstone. And I'm very glad that we were able to resolve the legal issues in a way that works for both communities. Attended this Clackamas Service Center Appreciation Dinner. I have to say that there are people who do an incredible job of volunteering both their money, their time, and even their personal possessions to help those that are less fortunate than the rest of us. The service center was burnt something like six months or more ago. In two days, they were up and running in the parking lot. You really have to give these folks credit for the work that they do. And I certainly hope that we can continue to support their efforts as we have in the past. As you probably know, I'm working on cross laminated timber as a project for our county and quite frankly, for the state. It has an opportunity to generate as many as 6,000 jobs in this state and 17,000 additional jobs. And when we look at our social services expenditures, if we really want to reduce the poverty and the expenditures in social services, then having jobs in transportation systems that work for people and housing that they can afford are all interrelated to that. And so my energy has been focused on things of that nature that can help develop the job opportunities in our county and in our state. In fact, I want our county to be the leader in this. The other project that I've taken on is an internet service provision system. We need to be in the 21st century throughout this entire county. We need high-speed, low-cost internet in every home and every business. To that end, I'm meeting with the, I have met with five of our local providers to work out how we do partnerships to that end and, and get that kind of service in every home and every business. That will increase productivity, increase the opportunity for working at home, to start new businesses, and quite frankly, also reduce the traffic because more people working at home means less people on the freeways. And finally, we've spent a lot of time and energy working on old issues with the Fair Board, conflicts that existed between this board and the Fair Board for a long time. And as a result of working with our mediating folks and some time and energy invested in building good, positive working relationships, we have resolved those issues and are moving forward to improve the fairgrounds and the, and the business operations at the fair. And on that note, Mr. Chairman, I will go to the dog, or to the dogs, as the case may be. This is Maya. She is a young American pit bull terrier mix dreaming of a forever home. The folks at the shelter think she might be mixed with border collie. She can be a little shy with new people, so please give her time to get to know you. A calm approach, a soft voice, and a tasty treat will all help her know that you want to be a friend. She sure can be a spirited, devoted, and very intelligent companion with patience and a training class.
How old is she?
I'm getting there. She will need lots of exercise and tasks to occupy her mind. A secure space to run, sniff, and play in addition to long, brisk daily walks will keep her happy and healthy. She'll need a home with no cats and children over 13 years old. And I don't know how old she is. The 13 was not about her. If you're looking for a small, active friend, here she is. For more information about Maya and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at 503-655-8628 or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And for my comments, I'd like to say that I did apologize to Julie personally. I did apologize publicly. And Les, when you asked me to apologize, I apologized. I made a mistake. And, you know, she, this morning, attended our legislative breakfast and I appreciated that she would do that after my comments. My intention was to celebrate the passage of Measure 101 and I should not have taken it out on her. I, you know, and also, I'd like to apologize to the commissioners sitting up here and Paul, who's not here, for putting you in this position. And Administrator Kevin and County Council and all county employees for putting them in this position. I made a mistake and I've apologized. Not the first person to make a mistake and nor will I be the last, but I do apologize and I did talk to Representative Parrish at least a couple of times since my posting. And smirking, I'm not sitting up here smirking. This is how I look. That's an old Richard thing. He used to say that when he spoke to us. I didn't insult you at all. With that, I'll adjourn the meeting.
Do not stand there and mention my name from the bench.
I adjourn the meeting. Thank you.